I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, I will turn it over to Dr. Brunel for special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome back, school community. It's nice to have you back. In the swing of things, happy to report that the school year is off to a great start. So, a few recognitions, just want to share with you. As I said in my memo, we have amazing students and families in Auburn. And wanted to highlight two groups of students who had outreach. They had really organized themselves. Both groups really trying to help to fill a need that they saw. The first one titled themselves the Auburn School Supply Foundation. And what their goal was, these are all seventh grade middle school students, who wanted to collect money so that all students could have the school supplies they needed. They recognized the great work that the First Aid Program through the Griffins and Auburn Youth already does, but they felt that there were still some gaps in that need. So, their goal is to raise a thousand dollars. As I noted in here, ultimately, they want to impact schools around central Massachusetts, but they've started with Auburn. So, I thought it was worthy of recognition for the work that they have done. So, the students who comprise the Auburn School Supply Foundation, again, are all seventh graders. Ally McGill, Ella Berg, Eva O'Reilly, Finn O'Donnell, Nora Foley, Mateo Pachera, Sophia Fortunato, and Sydney Mercantanti. So, actually, I received the email when I was, I think, down at the Cape at the superintendent's conference. And then, just a very short time later, another group of students, these comprised of fifth graders and one fourth grader, indicated that some of them had owed the siblings who had started the School Supply Foundation, and that they really wanted to start the Auburn United Arts Foundation, the goal of which is to raise money to provide the unified arts teachers, the art, music, and PE teachers with some supplies, money so that they could buy supplies. So, to congratulate those young students, we had Natalie Fraser, Annika Berg, Nora Staley, Taylor Costa, Claire Foley, Giuliana Fortunato, and Carly Bemandifer. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I thought it really showed evidence, not only of their, the fact that their parents were raising really conscientious, generous young children, but that we were certainly proud of them, too.
Any comments?
It's really wonderful, and I can't help noticing that some of the last names are the same between the seventh grade and the fifth grade, so they must be, or fourth grade, they must be siblings.
They very much are.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Very much are.
I thought you were gonna say, I recognize the parents' names. When I was teaching. Oh, that's...
I do, but...
A lot of credit is owed to the parents, as well as their teachers, who I'm sure had a little something to do with this, although our students are usually very giving, and it makes me happy to know that my children are going to school with these children. So, that's wonderful. Thank you.
The next item, the shelter box, we had made you aware of last late winter, early spring. But the Rotary Club, this is a middle school project that they had done. It was the National Junior Honor Society and the Student Council together, along with school-wide fundraising. And had been notified by the Auburn Rotary, was through their organization, that they were able to purchase a shelter box used to help survivors in Syria. And as Heather from the president of Rotary said, you should be very proud of all the work you and the students did to help provide this crucial aid to people in need. So, again, I think it shows the character of our students, and certainly our expectations for community service. So, kudos to all of those students as well. More good news, our school resource officer, Brian Kennedy, made us aware this summer that, as he said, just one more reason to be very proud of the team. The, actually, out in Indiana, the Hendricks County Sheriff's Department had actually looked online on YouTube and had viewed a number of Alice videos. And if you remember, we showed you the one this past spring. And he said that after watching some of those videos, they agreed that the one from the Auburn Public Schools was the best one. So, I thank our safety advisory team and Mr. Bergman and his team of students who did the filming of that. They really did a nice job.
I would share that the school that I teach at, Bay Path Vocational, I had shared our video, as well as some of our planned implementations with them, and they were very impressed, to the extent that now we're totally on board with Alice and the training will begin earlier this year, so.
Awesome.
Excellent. Everyone did enjoy the video.
That's great.
Good.
We have an attendance tonight, along with the other principals, Dr. Susan Lopez and Dr. Chamberlain. So, Dr. Lopez is serving as a member of the Department of Ed's Principal Advisory Cabinet. They're gonna be meeting throughout this school year to refine current policies and inform the development of new policies. So, I thank her for being a member of that committee, giving up her time to do so. I think it's important that we have our voice at the table, and as any time that Auburn staff members are, work outside of the district, I think it shines a really bright light on the work that we're doing and engaged in. And also to thank Dr. Chamberlain, as well as Dr. Lopez. They're both part of Desi's Elementary Principal Science Network, and they're really working to build the knowledge base around elementary science. So, I give kudos to both of them for their work in supporting that.
Any comments?
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens who would like to comment? Seeing none, I would seek approval, oh, I'm sorry, student representatives' report. Isabella?
Hi, so, school year just started last year, so we're all getting back into the swing of our classes and all activities that are gonna be starting up soon. iPad distribution started yesterday with the freshmen, and it looks like it'll end on Friday with the seniors. And the school year's going off to a good start.
Is that the extent of the report, Isabella?
Yeah.
Well done, as usual.
And you're senior, right?
Yep.
Whoa, okay.
The countdown begins. Well, thank you for stepping up again this year and providing us with the student representatives' report. Much appreciated. Okay, now, I would seek approval of the minutes of June 7, 2017.
I make the motion to approve of the minutes from June 7, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And we now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we have, as you can see in audience this evening, our principals are here, and with your permission, I'm gonna invite them to the microphone so they could introduce their new teachers, who are here and probably ready for a good night's sleep. I would imagine the opening of school is always exhausting, but very exciting as well. So, we'll start with, Mrs. Danik, if you wanna start and do an introduction, and then we'll work our way from there.
Okay, so, good evening, everybody. I'm so excited to be back, and the school year is off to a great start at Pacha Chog. Tonight, joining us is Esther Kim, who is actually a district speech and language pathologist, but her home base is at Pacha Chog, so we are thrilled to have her. She's relocating from California, so don't tell her about the winter, okay? And then, also, we have Jennifer Hamilton joining us tonight. She's not new to the district. She was the middle school secretary, but she's transferred into the preschool position, teaching at Pacha Chog. And I have to tell you, I love having the new preschool classrooms at Pacha Chog. It is such a joy to see those little bitty ones come in. So, when I'm missing at Pack, I might be down in the preschool rooms. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, next, if we can have Dr. Chamberlain introduce her new staff members.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Happy to see you all and happy to be back. We, too, have had a great start this year. Lot of support from the community. The police department's been great as far as traffic control, so it's been wonderful. I'd like to introduce Tara Connor to you this evening. She's taken the position of first grade teacher with Bryn Mawr School. And I'd like to thank all of you for your support in adding this position this year with our increased enrollment at that grade level. It's made a huge difference, and I will say, you would never know that her classroom was once a cafeteria. And we've also added Ms. Dowd, who's not here with us tonight, Haley Dowd, as our second grade teacher to replace Kathy Bylin, who retired last year. Haley had been our EL tutor, so it was nice to kind of bring her on as a teacher, and so far, so good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, Dr. Lopez, to introduce Swanson Road's new staff.
Good evening. I think I echo the same as my colleagues. I have one, oh, well, first, the year is off to a great start. We're lucky, we've also had the Auburn Fire Department visit all of our schools to try to have those first fire drills prior to all the rain, so that went off well. I have one person to introduce tonight. She is our new RN at Swanson Road, and that is Mrs. Sharinda Trudell. She comes with lots of experience, and we are thrilled to have her on board, and we're off to a great start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we forget, just want to recognize Leah Gauthier. She's joined us, Margaret Collins resigned. She moved, got a job closer to her home, so she's not able to be here tonight, but she's a great addition as well. Mr. Gaggen, if you want to introduce the middle school teachers.
Good evening, everyone. So great to be here tonight. Middle school, as well, is off to a fantastic start. We were able to get out 630 iPads in the first two days of school. Credit to my staff, they did an excellent job getting all those out and up and running. We have four teachers here with us tonight. One who is not new to the district, who's a long-term sub. Anthony Camret is our engineering technology teacher. And then we have Pam Broden, who is new to the district. She's our math interventionist. Pam's got a lot of spirit, and she's gonna be working really hard down there with their math program. And they have Margaret Peg Maringer, who's here, who is going to be our Spanish and French teacher. She's fluent in both, and English, by the way. Dominique Fowler was not able to come tonight. She's come to us from Switzerland, and her plane is not stuck in the Atlantic, but she's actually had some daycare issues, so she wasn't able to make it. But we wish them all well. We're gonna have a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Handfield.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? As Izzy already shared, we're off to a great start at Auburn High School, and I'm sure there's more great stuff to come, as always. Tonight, I'm happy to introduce one of our new staff members who's with us tonight, Ms. Rebecca Griffin. She joins us in the Department of Science. She's teaching biology. She replaces Rogerie Ribbons, who bumped into, Kathy Toby retired, so she took over in physical education. And our second new staff member, who's not here this evening, is Mr. Gregory Walton. He is the, he's coming to us as a team chair, replacing Amy Plant, who took a job teaching English back in the South Beach Public Schools. So, we're thrilled to have both of them with us, and I can tell you, top to bottom, having been with the new teachers and the superintendent and Dr. Lozay, we've got some great, great new staff coming in, so we're really excited to work with them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for the new staff?
Just welcome to all of you, and you're in a good school system. Just make us proud.
If I could just say, thank you very much. I enjoyed 41 years of teaching in Auburn, and I loved every minute. Actually, didn't even wanna retire, and if I'd just hung on, I could've worked at that brand-new school, too. Done. But Auburn's a great system. I hope you love it as much as I did, and still do. That's why I'm doing this now, 'cause I couldn't give it up.
Thank you for taking time out of the busy start of the school year, and it's great having you aboard. If you're half as good as the leadership team, and Dr. Brunel says that you are, then I think we're in good hands, so welcome aboard. And if there ever anything that we can do for you, feel free to come in and talk to us. Dr. Brunel?
No, they're a great team, so we're excited to have you. And with your permission, perhaps they can come and finish their minutes and get some rest.
Absolutely. Yes, you are dismissed.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again for coming out. Good luck this school year. Oh, Isabella, you're gonna sneak out, too? Good night, yeah. See you later. Thank you.
Bye, welcome.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Aye, thank you.
Bye.
It really is exciting. As sad as it is to have staff who've been with us a long time leave, and it really is, 'cause they take a lot of institutional knowledge with them, but it's also nice to welcome some new individuals, too. They bring enthusiasm that really is, it spreads everywhere, so it's good.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Definitely clean house, Jordan.
Okay, moving along.
So, Mr. Fahey was not able to be with us this evening, but I'd like to go through what he had planned to share. In your packets is the listing of projects that took place this summer. And while it certainly pales in comparison to work that was done two years ago in particular, we moved multiple schools and such, an awful lot went on, and I thank Mr. Fahey, his custodial team, the work that he did in contracting. And he, Mr. Fahey also was fulfilling his civic duty with jury duty that lasted 45 days long, but was coming in, 45 days. So, he would come in very early in the mornings, be here late in the evenings and on weekends and stuff, which he oftentimes will do during this school year, too, but he was juggling all of that with his jury duty. But he's done in two more weeks, so I think he will be happy to. Lots of great things that took place. A quick update regarding the Pacha Chog Accelerated Repair Roof Project. They have made great progress with that. There are a few minor items that remain, but remain really grateful to the team in place. MDM was the actual contractor. We had Hill International, that was our OPM, and CGKV was the architects. And really was a good team in place. There were some delays that took place early on, but happy to report that things are tightened up, and there's a few minor issues, but they're addressing those, so we're in good shape. In terms of the green community grants, as you know, Auburn is one of 72 communities designated as such statewide. And happy to report that back on June 19, we were notified that Auburn would receive grants totaling $213,804. And what they're gonna be doing is funding the energy conservation measures, and it's all done based on the cost of the project and how many years it will take to actually get back with the money, isn't any cost in energy savings. So, Auburn High School is having its second LED conversion project at the high school. There's a complete retrocommissioning study being done for the heating and cooling system at the high school, and repair and replacement of the steam traps at Bryn Mawr School. We actually had them on the list for a couple of years, and it was finally approved. In terms of the town side municipal buildings, the building automation system and rooftop unit at the Auburn Public Library, those controls will be replaced. So, it's a great opportunity to get some money into the town and the district and to help us save energy, which is what we're doing, too.
Great job.
In terms of the solar project, so Mr. Fahey, Mrs. Worzvicky, Mr. Fahey and I met with Julie Jacobson and town manager Casanovic, as well as Adam, town planner, this summer. And we have been talking about, as part of our whole commitment to reducing energy costs and reducing the energy use that we have, Mr. Fahey, we engaged with a consultant to look at our school builders, to determine which, if any, might be able to take a solar panel project. And when the middle school was built, it was actually one of the potential alternatives, and it was decided by the SBC at the time not to do it. Because of the return, however, it was built to structurally handle it. The high school the same way. They didn't intend to put them on there, but it's been checked. Instructurally, they're okay to handle it. What we'd like from you tonight is you to authorize us to go out with a request for proposal. This does not commit us to anything at this time, but the analysis that has been done, if solar panels were to be put on the high school and middle school, and it's basically a lease project, it would be that we do not put any monies out, but it could significantly reduce our energy costs for the next 20 years. So, it's a great budgetary item for consideration. We're really in the exploratory stage, but we wanted to keep you aware of it. You know, in terms of the team of us that have met locally in here, we all think that this makes great sense to do, and something certainly to explore, so wanted to get your approval to do so and move forward. With Mr. Fahey coming back with an update, once we have more information to share.
Sounds good. I would entertain that motion.
I make the motion to authorize Mr. Fahey to move forward and seeking requests for proposals, RFPs, to install solar panels on the roofs of the Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I have a question. The lease, is it like a, do you pay monthly? Or, I know with, like, residential housing, some people have opted to just buy the solar panels, and they end up saving money in the long run.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's very costly to do that for the schools, but I didn't know, like...
So, what I believe to be true with this, based on our conversations, is they would actually lease our property to place them up there. So, they would actually pay the district a fee in order to have them up there, and then would take whatever energy is generated from these. First, we would get a credit on our bills for both the high school and middle school. If there's any excess, they can sell it back to the grid. So, it really seems, you know, and Mr. Fahey's done extensive research around this, he seems to think that this is the best way to go, you know, in this process. So, it's really that they're leasing our rooftop, right?
Okay. And structure, I mean, I know you said they're both structurally sound, but like, in the long run, it won't do damage, or?
No, it, that's my understanding. You know, I mean, and Mr. Fahey, when he comes to an upcoming meeting, he can go through it further, but when we sat and we actually had a conference call with the consultant who has done this and has worked with a lot of municipalities in the school districts, it has been a great situation for those districts. Yeah.
All right, that sounds awesome.
Yeah, it does.
Win-win.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments? All in favor? Aye. Aye. It is a vote.
The next item, another exciting piece, you are aware that through the CIP, that we were hoping to install an infield turf at the Auburn High School baseball field, and it's actually slated to occur now. Mr. Fahey went out and solicited bids for that, and based on the price that has come in, it is our recommendation to not only do the infield turf, but to also, so it's all completely done, to do the outfield warning track area, as well as the girls, is a small area in the girls, that's a grass field, but an area that really could benefit from this. So, it's our recommendation that you approve in two parts. First, to award the contract to Net Sports Group for a total of $226,762. And then, we outlined how it is that we would pay for that, which is basically, we have $150,000 in the FY17 CIP that was approved by you and town meeting, $17,500 from the baseball field revolving account, and those are from rental fees that we have collected for that, and then $59,262 from the school choice account.
I would entertain each of those motions.
I'll make a motion to authorize Mrs. Worzvicky and Mr. Fahey to enter into a contract for $226,762 with Net Sports Group for the installation of infield and warning track turf at Auburn High.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Question. So, is this a dirt field now, when they're gonna put the turf in? Is that...
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
Any other questions?
In, not to interrupt, I apologize. With it then installed, it will actually allow the baseball field in the offseason to be used as a soccer field. So, it will free up additional space and allow for the youth organizations, as well as our organizations, our teams, to utilize that. So, based on the striking that they'll do, and that's really one of the benefits of doing the warning track as well, it allows it to be a regulation size.
Oh, wow.
It's really great.
Sounds good.
Excellent.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And I would entertain that second motion to approve the payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of the Auburn High infield and warning track turf project from CIP Baseball Field Rental Revolving Account Funds and from school choices outline.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
As we do annually, I met with both of our chiefs, Chief Coleman and Chief Lucas, regarding the updated multi-hazard plan. So, I thank the principals for their work in updating them, and our safety advisory team for their ongoing work in supervising that and making sure that we stay up to date and truly on the cutting edge to be sure that our students and staff are as safe as possible. So, wanted to make you aware that that has been completed. I did want to thank you for allowing me, again, supporting my attendance at the Superintendent's Executive Institute this summer. I listed for you some of the sessions that I attended. It was really a great program, again, this summer. And as it says here, the title was Leading and Creating Inclusive Schools: All Means All. And I will tell you that through these different sessions, it's always very affirming to see the programs that we have in place, the work that we've done in really supporting our students. So, kudos to our district and the leadership of our whole team doing that, as well as you. The Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative, they do require the appointment of a board member. I've served in that capacity the last nine years, and I recommend that I continue to do so, if you're appreciative.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to appoint Dr. Maryelle Brunel, Superintendent of Schools, as the Auburn Public Schools representative on the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, thank you for stepping up once again.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
The next item is to appoint the district's civil rights coordinator. Dr. Lozay has asked once again to serve in this capacity, and it is my recommendation that we have her do so.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to appoint Dr. Kathy Lozay as the civil rights coordinator for the Auburn Public Schools.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Did you really ask Dr. Lozay?
You just told.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Always.
And then, reappointments to the school building committee. Mr. Fahey and Mr. Page are both representatives of the school committee, so it is my recommendation that you reappoint them. Not sure how much longer we will be meeting, but we certainly will have a couple of more meetings, for sure.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Mr. Fahey and Mr. Page to another three-year term on the school building committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Wayne, thank you for doing that once again. Hopefully, it's not the full three years. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Very interesting committee.
Always good, a little excitement here and there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As we do each year, I just wanted to provide you with a class size update. As Dr. Chamberlain said, it was a very wise decision for us to add a first grade class. As you can see, it was still very appropriate to eliminate one of the kindergarten classes at Pacha Chog. We have a couple of classes that are over the 25, but if you've noticed, those are because they made conscious decisions based on composition of the students. Unfortunately, we have a good amount of support staff in our school, so we're in good shape currently. I did want to, as part of this, also let you know, as is always the way, we had an awful lot of registrations this summer, particularly in August, not only for school, but also for our satellite and galaxy program, and even for busing. So, just to make you aware, in terms of busing, after the due date, we collected 205 passes after the due date.
Wow.
And 126 of those were late. Those were people who were in the district already. Seventy-nine were new. So, you know, with the hundred-dollar fee that we assessed last year, you know, it worked for many, but certainly, there was still 126 late. So, it does cause, and I think, Mrs. Worzvicky is, well, is Mrs. O'Connell, and AA Transportation, because it requires an awful lot of juggling on bus routes, you know? So, they did that work. Mrs. Otner, as you can see here, the satellite, galaxy, and asteroids handles the registrations for these. And, you know, each group, particularly if you look at the Swanson After School from '59 to '97, those are very quality programs that we offer at very affordable prices. So, people are really taking advantage. But each time new ones got added and principals were notified, once it gets to a certain threshold of students, new, more staff needs to be added, 'cause we want to keep it to a reasonable student-to-staff ratio. So, it presents challenges, and it certainly has everybody hopping, particularly mid to late August, but just wanted to make you aware of those increases.
Question. Would anyone ever be turned away because of the amount of students you already had, or is there cap?
In terms of on the bus?
On the, I meant, please, satellite and galaxy.
So, I will say, that's some internal discussions that we've, you know, been having, and we want to, as a leadership team, you know, we've got the school year up and running in another couple of weeks when we meet again, to really kind of discuss some of these things that what we may want to do in the future is to say, That what we may wanna do in the future is to say, you know, after a certain date, we will put you on a waiting list. And make sure that we give principals the time to, you know, hire those additional staff and even, you know, for busing that. You know, once the routes are set, that after a particular date, because, you know, it's a ripple effect. That once you move one group of students to another bus, you've gotta call it, take all of those families and it it's a domino, I guess I should say, you know. So it creates challenges. In terms of students registering, we certainly can't turn them away, you know.
Oh, no.
But um so it's something I just wanna discuss with the leadership team and see if there's there's a way to handle it. But there's always an influx at the end of August. This year it seemed to be particularly high. Um more so than in in recent years that I can recall anyway.
Through through the chair, do you mind if I just ask about what percentage of those were new registrations in August? I mean, did we feel that it was just a surge and?
So yeah, so of the two hundred five, a hundred twenty-six were students who had been in the district before. So those are straight late bus applications.
But hey, you have a lot of kids to get in the last. It seems like that would be very hard to even predict. I mean, our big school system.
Right, right. We had, um, you know, we'll give you the official counts on October first, uh when we take them officially. But we are up um, when you add in our new uh kindergarten classes, over eighty students. That were up in enrollment um this year, which will have to keep in mind, because that should have a um positive impact. On the chapter seventy monies that we get, because many school districts have declining enrollments. And this, for the second year, we're seeing an increase in enrollment. And you'll see actually in my goals a little bit later. That one of my draft goals is really to have a subcommittee of our leadership team to really look at that and the impact it's having in the district.
I, through the chair, I can see why people are moving into Auburn. I mean, houses are selling in no time flat. I mean, and they're paying, they're not bargaining them down, they're paying the price or. I mean, Auburn's become a very desirable community to live in, and I think the schools is probably.
School system.
Like one of the top reasons, if not the top reason. But um I I just can't understand, what did you say, a hundred and twenty-nine people?
One twenty-six.
One twenty-six? I mean, do they give the people, the clerks, any kind of excuse, or they just?
No, I mean, it really runs the gamut, whether there were some who hadn't intended to or. Yeah, I mean, it it's a variety of.
Yeah, but nothing we could fix or move around or?
I don't think so. I think that we, um, through the chair, I think that we did a a great job.
Yeah.
Of notifying families through emails, through uh voice messages, sending them hard copies. So I think, um, you know, it's a a variety of reasons. And I I think it would be unrealistic to think, I know our hope was that by raising the fee, or when you raise the fee to a hundred dollars, it would eliminate any late ones. Um because it does cause that domino effect with uh the bus routes, uh but it didn't. So we'll talk more about it. If we can come up with some ideas, we'll certainly.
And that's a hundred per student that they have, right? So if it's a three-child family, that's three hundred dollars?
Correct.
For each child that's late. Wow.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It's unfortunate. I wish you luck with that. It's gonna be very difficult to overcome, because we we don't wanna take away services. From anyone who is a taxpayer and who um supports our school system. However, it's not fair to those of us whose children are getting on those buses and and running, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes late. Because of new bus routes. So I it's, I don't know how you balance that.
I know, I know.
Keep us posted. Thank you.
George.
Notifications you guys do too, which is just been unbelievable. I mean, I'm just getting worried so high.
Um through the chair, let's see, um the numbers in Swiss, I mean, obviously, there's some really high numbers. Are you concerned at all that we are gonna run out of room over there, or do we have room to grow?
So I I've actually asked Dr. Lopez that. She could do some shifting around and find at least another classroom, if not more. So um so that is available. You know, we have the benefit in um all of our, or nearly all of our schools right now. That our specialists have dedicated classrooms. That was not always the case. Oftentimes, they would travel between classes. So there are options available to us, for sure.
Alright, that's good. I mean, with these climbing numbers, it's concerning.
Agreed, agreed.
And we don't have any school choice there, right?
We do not. We do not.
That's the middle school and the high school.
I would tell you that um of our new registrations, Swanson Road, it just happened to be the school and it's something. Happens this way. I think if memory serves, it was forty-four new students at at Swanson, or somewhere close to forty new students. At Swanson Road, which is very concentrated there. So it was a lot. Wanted to make you aware, um as is done on a annual or biannual basis. Uh Mr. Scobie did sign the Authorization for Medication Administration, so it's included in your packet as an FYI. I've added it to be submitted this summer. More good news that came out, um the unfortunate news of Commissioner Chester's untimely passing this spring. Was quite honestly a shock to uh people across the Commonwealth. Acting Commissioner Jeff Wilson, who has stepped in, he was his deputy commissioner previously, is doing a fine job, an excellent job. And he sent out to all superintendents recently that U.S. News and World Report recognized Massachusetts as the best state in the nation. With regard to education. So I think that, you know, the work that we do in individual districts and with students. Really um collectively results in Massachusetts being the leader, as it has been for numerous years, but this is a nice recognition. So thought that we should all be part of this, including ourselves as school committee. And then finally, Monday, uh September eleventh, will be the twenty-third annual Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament. Uh in the past, in total since nineteen ninety-five, they have raised and donated back to our students and staff in the form of grants. Two hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So I will, as I do, manually go to thank them on Monday. Uh before they take their for- first shots off the tee.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm, nice.
Any comments?
Just through the chair, there's also a grant deadline for many grants for the Auburn Chamber that's coming up, September twenty-seventh. So if you know of any teachers or um team members that actually have a smaller project that they might be interested in. They can actually download the form right off the Chamber's website and submit, but that's coming up in a couple of weeks, so.
Great reminder.
Hmm, thank you for that. I hadn't heard. We now move on to unfinished business. And I think the only unfinished business that we have is um Dr. Brunel's um goals, to put in the goals and evaluation. So I will read off the results of that before I get started. I'll just say that um it's obvious that we consider um it to have been a successful year for the school district and for Dr. Brunel. And um with that being said, I will quickly read through um her scores. So for student learning goals, um Dr. Brunel received a score of nineteen point eight out of twenty, which is outstanding. For professional practice goals, also nineteen point eight out of twenty. District improvement goals, nineteen point eight out of twenty. Um any comments before I move on to?
Just that she deserves it and it shows, just by what the committee is doing in evaluation.
Absolutely.
I would agree. And as far as the um Department of Ed Evaluation Instrument and Standard One in Instructional Leadership. Where um obviously, Dr. Brunel is not directly involved in um instructional um, the instruction of our students. But um she is in charge of the the leadership team and they continue to do a phenomenal job. So um please understand that when we speak of the Dr. Brunel's achievements, that we're also speaking um to the leadership team, as well as all of our teachers. So Standard One um Instructional Leadership, nine point eight out of ten. Standard Two, Management and Operations, nine point eight out of ten. Standard Three, Family and Community Engagement, nine point eight out of ten. Standard Four, Professional Culture, nine point eight out of ten. So an overall score of ninety-eight point six out of one hundred um is what Dr. Brunel received. So once again, um she continued to impress us. And uh I know that I I speak on behalf of the the entire committee and we say that we're grateful to to have you at the helm. And uh it's excellent working with you and congratulations on such a wonderful score. And congratulations to your support staff, who also, I I know that um you're never selfish about um the way that you thank them. So uh any comments before I turn it over to Dr. Brunel?
Just, go ahead, Wayne. That's fine.
I'd just like to say to you and your team, you do such a great job. It's it's unbelievable. And so proud to have a team and a superintendent that works as hard as they do for our kids in Auburn. And I would like to thank you and for my hat.
Thank you.
So thank you and your team.
And I would agree with Wayne and just say to all those other school districts out there, they can't have you. Auburn is keeping you.
She's got a thirty-year contract.
Yes. She's not on the market. Nope, nope.
Of course, thank you. I feel like you're always going above and beyond. I don't think you sleep.
Hmm.
Um but I'm I couldn't be more thrilled as a parent of a child in the district and I don't know, I just thank you. Keep doing what you're doing. Thanks.
Yeah, I thank you very much. I think you make our lives easy. I've watched uh school committee meetings from New Hampshire, actually. And um wow, I know your intention is not the same as you. But um not only do we think you're fabulous, but word on the street is like the parents are so happy with. What you've done and you go above and beyond. You get back, you follow up with people, you make sure, you know, issues are resolved. And it's the whole leadership team that also, you know, is to thank as well. But yeah, I don't know how you could lose any points. I just think you've been, it's been a good year, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Dr. Brunel, would you like to say anything?
I do. So I thank all of you for your support. It really is a team effort. And George, I appreciate you uh recognizing the leadership team. It is never about uh one person. It's always about a team. And uh there's just a fantastic team in place who all are so committed to not only the success of this district. But the success of every student. And I think that's what really separates us, because it's not about in the whole and it it is, it's important. But we really try to drill down as a team to make sure that every child is positively impacted. So kudos to all of them and uh I will be sharing, share your scores with them, 'cause they've earned it as well too. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Welcome.
And we now move on to new business.
Wanted to make you aware that we have a fall special time meeting. The date has been set for October twenty-four. Um the warrant actually closes tomorrow for that. So in your packet is a copy. But I wanna share with you a couple of changes um that have been made up late. It's actually on the backside of it. Those two smaller articles, we've labeled them Articles Four and Five, they will not actually be needed. Because the values are as low as they are, we're simply going to be, we had paid for some of these repairs. Out of a revolving account. So we're actually going to just do a journal entry. So Articles Four and Five will not be needed. But the first three, we do recommend. Um the first one is regarding the Kinny Bento. That's the money that we receive in reimbursement for homeless, transportation we provide for homeless students. It's never the full amount that we actually expend. It's a portion thereof. Um so we will be seeking town meeting's approval for that money. In terms of the Medicaid reimbursement, as you know, it was approved at a hundred sixty thousand. What the town actually received, excuse me, was two hundred four thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
Oh.
So anything beyond what was approved is actually money that goes into general fund revenue. But based on that and looking at our student needs, we feel comfortable in seeking town members, meeting members' approval to increase up to a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Um and that way, with their approval, when the monies come in next year, we can get up to that amount, or this year, we can get up to that amount um next year. And then finally, um the Special Education Reserve Fund, you had approved that previously. Um Mrs. Worsbicky and Dr. Lozay and I are actually meeting with um Town Manager Jacobson and CFO Keston, which tomorrow. We're going to talk about um that warrant article again, and we will come back to it the next meeting. Our plan will be to go and um meet with the Board of Selectment and if the Finance Committee is meeting, to go before them as well. To provide as much clarification as we can on it. It is relatively new. We continue to believe that it is a very wise uh item for the town to do, just to establish it. We're not looking for any monies to go into that yet, but with the establishment of that fund, if monies were to become available, whether it's through our own budget. Um or through the town uh's budget in total, to have that money there, as we know, the volatility of the special education account. Particularly out of district is one that impacted us greatly um for this school year. So our intention is to go forward and and seek that and doing a little bit more work upfront with our boards.
Okay.
Any comments?
Alright, that sounds good.
Okay, I would entertain the motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant articles as presented by the Business Manager and Superintendent.
Does that have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It was a vote.
So I placed at your seats a copy of my draft and I I put draft across the, my goals. I'll give you just some quick highlights of it and then give you the opportunity to read it and we'll put it on um our next agenda on the twentieth. But as I had mentioned earlier, we have um this year, currently we have eighty-three additional students and last year we had sixty-six. So my goal, and you'll see in here that I I talk about, you know, whether it's a subcommittee or the leadership team, for us to, as a district, look at. Uh the impact of that and whether we need to bring forward any recommendations to you. And also for us to look at grade uh configurations, I mean, the high school is set and the middle school. But is there any other way to reconfigure the elementary schools that might better support student learning? It's all about student learning. And then also to look at our preschool-aged children uh in terms of, we've got that best practices grant. Dr. Lozay has just outreach to our preschool providers. We'll be meeting with them again soon. We wanna be sure that all students, preschool-aged children in Auburn have access to programming, whether it's through our programs or the private providers. Uh so that is our our goal. The next item is talking about chronic absenteeism, which the U.S. Department of Education says if you, a child's absent fifteen or more school days. They're at risk of falling behind in school. So we currently have about eleven percent of our students who fit that category. Uh the state average is twelve point eight percent. Um now, some of those, the eleven percent, what I did not do was to say. To take off the names of the students who we know are out on medical concerns and issues and such. But so we just looked at the standard set by the U.S. Department of Ed. So the principals and leadership team does a real good job about trying to emphasize the importance of school attendance. But we do have some students who, starting at a very young age, are chronically absent, uh and their absences accumulate over time. So we want to really delve deeper into that. We've had a subcommittee looking at it, but we're really gonna focus on that this year to see. You know, because if children are in school and in their classes, they're that much more likely to be engaged and and participate and ultimately graduate. Uh in terms of professional practice, we're gonna continue the learning watch. We're actually gonna expand it to all schools across the district. It was a great experience. Dr. Lozay led us through um this past year and uh excited to expand it to all schools. And then the start time issue, I'm sure you've heard about it on the news. And for us to really take a um a hard look at, you know, what would be the benefits of it, I think it's pretty clear out there on the benefits. But also the implications, because if there were to be any shifts, that would have a domino effect, could have a domino effect across the district. So we're gonna focus on that. And then next is the strategic plan, uh the one that was developed in the fourteen, fifteen school year. To the credit of all of our leadership team, the teachers, the community members who were participants. Uh we've done a remarkable job of really addressing uh the vast majority of those activities outlined. So it's our intention to engage, and I think I shared with you in June, another one. And we talked about this as a leadership team at our opening uh on August twenty-second. And agreed that rather than hire a consultant to do this, we would uh coordinate this ourselves. Um but our intention would be to bring in representatives, um you know, from all the different boards, the committees, those who have children, those who don't. Students in the district, um clergy, higher education, and all of those that are listed here. So later in the meeting, we'll talk about a potential date for that. The next goal is about ensuring our students, whose families may have financial limitations, can take advantage of the same opportunities as as all of the others. As you can see, the free reduced lunch rates, and this I received today from Mrs. King. Um in total, it's between twenty-six and thirty-two percent at each of the schools. So it's over a twenty-five percent, over a quarter of the schools in each, um the students in each of our schools qualify for free or reduced lunch. So we wanna make sure that um we're make, we're not limiting what they can do. And that helping our own fund, Kathy actually leads this subcommittee to look at how are we gonna actually use those dollars and by what criteria? So that is work left to be done. And then finally, staying on top of the safety, not only academically and physically, but also socially and emotionally. With our students. So that'll be put on the agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions. We will put it on the agenda for next time as well, after you've had a chance to. that'll be put on the agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions. We will put it on the agenda for next time as well, after you've had a chance to read through it.
Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say, I'm very glad you're looking into student attendance because we can't educate them if they're not in school. And I mean, that was always the thing and people would say, just send work home. It's not the same. You need to be with teachers. So, I mean, if we could do anything to fix that, that would be awesome.
Is everyone comfortable with that being on the next agenda or if possible, would you like to push it out, um, four weeks? And how would that affect, um, you, Dr. Brunel, just to give us a chance to really?
It, it would be fine. What my intention is, I just wanted to share this with you tonight. I would share a draft copy with the principals and that way they see, um, the direction that I'm hoping to go in, but you need to agree on the goals that I've set. So if you want to do it on the twentieth or wait until October fourth, that's fine.
So it, it wouldn't be of any concern to you to push it out to October fourth?
No.
No, not at all? Is that okay with the committee?
It's fine.
Just to give us a little bit more time to, you know, peruse.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for that.
Sure.
And so the next item is the development of the new strategic plan. We had originally talked about November fourth, Saturday, but actually Mrs. Holloway reminded me and I looked in, that's the final day of the MASC, MASSS Conference, that Saturday. So I did look at alternate dates and, uh, November eighteenth is a date that works. We'd actually look to host it at Auburn Middle School. It might give those who might not have been in the middle school yet an opportunity to see. Plus the high school's already booked on both the fourth and the eighteenth. So share that with you, um, and then with that date in mind, we're going to start our work about identifying our guests and notifying them.
Wayne, do we have to vote for a delegate for the conference again?
You do, and I believe we've got it, yeah, it was taken in the minute. We do, we do need to, yes.
Okay. Are we looking for a motion for?
Can I recommend we change it to the eighteenth unless you're all going to leave the conference on the third of November and I think some of you stay in the past.
Okay, I would entertain that motion to set the date, the Saturday, November eighteenth.
I will make that motion and set the date, uh, Saturday, November eighteenth is the date to begin the strategic planning process with this meeting being held at Auburn Middle School.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote.
Wanted to make you aware that on October twenty-third, we'll have an undergrad student from the unit, nutrition program at UMass. Will be working in our food service program with Mrs. King and Mrs. Lou Stead. So we look forward to her coming. She's going to provide some nutrition outreach and information on new programs. So it's a nice opportunity for us to get, um, some new people in the air and free of charge too.
Excellent. We like free.
So as required by Desi's statute, we have a student who's attending the Sizer School. So I included electronically for you a copy of that annual report. Uh, it was rather lengthy, so we did not include it in hard copy. We certainly can, but it's really FYI for you.
Okay.
The budget timeline, I know we have just started this current school year, but we've developed with Mrs. Worsbicky, the budgeting timeline uh, for FY nineteen, so that there's ample time for you to hear the presentations, for us to listen to the principals and administrators as they come in with their requests and to get it to Town Manager Jacobson by the second Monday in January. So we share it with you for your information and know that we have already begun our discussions on it. And up at the top, it's not the FY twenty-one, eight, nine, it's twenty-nineteen. There, sorry. And then finally, the MASC delegate for the conference in November, they do ask. Uh, it is my recommendation that you appoint one of your members so you have a voice at that table as well.
Wayne, are you still interested in that?
Sure.
You're okay with?
It's all yours.
Mrs. Holloway, you're okay with him taking his seat back?
Ah, absolutely.
She's got it written on it.
I wrote it right in. I'll make that motion to appoint Wayne Page as the MASC delegate to the MASC, MASSS Joint Conference in November.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, thank you.
There's a vote. Congratulations, Wayne.
All yours.
And then finally, the upcoming events, as you can see, the curriculum events, um, will soon begin taking place as early as next week and running for the next couple of weeks or so. And our first half day will be on September twenty-sixth.
Okay, thank you for that. We now move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Lizay?
I'd like to staff, I just highlighting the August twenty-second breakfast that we held for all new teachers to the district. It was a great morning. The food service provided the breakfast, which was delicious as usual. We also like to recognize our professional status teachers. You earn that after completing three full years in our district. And we like to give them a certificate and a little gift to recognize the next milestone along the way of their career. So that was great. Then we took all the new teachers on their annual school bus ride on the yellow school bus. Went to visit all the different schools with several of them having, having mini workshops. So we had three different workshops. One was on technology within the district, how to access their email. Another was around required forms and deadlines for those forms, so they don't miss out on opportunities. And the final one was around IUPs and five oh fours, which is really illegal documents that we want to make sure that they're aware of. And as everybody said earlier, just seeing their enthusiasm and excitement, put smiles on all of our faces. It was a great morning. So that update. I also have in your packet copies of the opening day agenda. There were two opening days. The first day was mostly building based meetings in the morning. We all met at the high school. We had a delicious dessert bar put on, also by the food services, complete with sunflowers and all sorts of beautiful things. It really was terrific. Um, and then we met in the auditorium to hear remarks by Dr. Brunel. And our emphasis this year was really about all, we're all making connections with kids and building relationships because if you can do that, the learning is going to take place. So after the remarks, we actually ended with a video, a TED Talk video um, entitled, What I Wish My Teacher Knew About Me. And a teacher had started this as a writing assignment with her students and it kind of went viral. And teachers across the country started doing that with their students. And when they shared some of the students' responses, actually it could make you cry, some of the responses, but it really spoke to our message of this is how you can build connections with your kids. Really listen to them, see them, um, take the time so that you have that relationship. So I think that maybe in the future, we might hear from some of our own students about what they think teachers might want to know. And then the second day, we provided some professional opportunities that different groups went to. So it was great. And that seems like it was six months ago because we're in full swing, so I feel like just last week. Um, and just quickly to give you an update around some summer work, we worked with a lot of curriculum this year. The high school is getting ready for NIESC, so the departments there have worked for several days on some of their curriculum documents. Our middle school science teachers have a new science program, a new NUI science, so they wanted to create pacing guides and they had preimposed assessments that they created. Took several days. And our elementary people, we had a variety of subcommittees. We had math committee that looked at our assessments again. And after using Go Math now for two years, what needed to be tweaked and resequenced in order to be ready for our MCAS two point O. We had writing committees at the elementary level and we also worked to get on our wonders templates because after using it for a year, they now are more familiar, so they were able to do a lot of adjustment to that, to that, which was great. And then it culminated, like a week before school, teachers came in to work on the elementary science, really looking at those new standards and identifying areas where we never taught it, so we need to fill that gap in other areas that have moved to another grade level or where there might be some overlap. So that was a great two days and we continue to do that through the school year. The ultimate goal being we'll come back with a proposal for a program that we would like to adopt, capable of. And I'd like to thank them all. I keep, every summer, I'm amazed that they give up sunny days to come in and do this work. They're so committed to our kids. So kudos to all of them. In terms of our summer camp, it was amazing. If you were at the high school and all this summer, it was quite, uh, bustling with activity. We held all our programs there. Our pre-K, the twelve extended school year program for our special ed students serviced fifty students. Our Title I, our media program, uh, serviced over a hundred and fifty students. And our STEM program had thirty-six students in it. Not only ran for a week, we had credit recovery there as well for our high school students for about twenty-five. And then Camp Invention, which we are only in our second year of, had seventy students, which was double from last year where there was thirty-five. And each of these programs provide some sort of survey to, to parents and staff about the program. And it all came back, like, keep this program, we really love this, maybe make it longer, maybe do more. So it's a, a great testament to the work they do. And then last is the Youth Opioid Prevention Grant that we talked to you last year about. We were lucky enough to be awarded that grant. And the committee that oversees that grant, as you know, includes some town officials, it includes the police, the fire, the school. So we met this summer and we looked at all of the things, all the things that we wrote in that grant, which were many, but they're exciting. And we created a timeline for that and we'll be starting our kickoff in October. October seventeenth, we plan to have a vigil which will be held at the Auburn High School. It's really just to make the community aware of the opioid crisis and bringing us all together as a community of how can we really fight this crisis in our community. So we plan to have some keynote speakers and try to find some people who can really speak about their personal experience with this so that we can get people kind of excited about helping us. You know, everybody, I think, thinks it's such a valuable, um, initiative to go out and do something about it, but it's hard to do something alone. So if we can bring everybody together, I think, um, that would be a great way to start to combat it. We did purchase with that grant some curriculum, sorry.
Right, through the chair. Can I, could, would you repeat the date that you said?
October seventeenth.
Thank you.
We also purchased some curriculum materials. We had focused the grant on the middle school students. So we have curriculum materials for students in grade six through eight that we're going to have our PE teachers as well as our guidance teachers use. So their training will be upcoming and once they've been trained, will be able to start implementing that as well. And as you all know, while we were planning that grant, Chris Heffernan, who was the former Fall River, Massachusetts Division One basketball star as well as a former Celtic, that's part I remember, um, he had come and spoken to the high school and it was so compelling that we wanted our middle school students to hear it as well. So we wrote that into the grant. But as we met this summer and really talked with the committee, really felt that we needed to have him come back at night as well and speak to parents and community members, that that would be really impactful as well. Unfortunately, in looking into the cost for the day and the evening, it turned out to be twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So it seems daunting, but so this summer, some letters were sent, some local politicians and banks requesting some support in this fight against the opioid crisis. Thus far, we've received two donations, a hundred dollars each, one from Senator Moore and one from the Webster First Credit, Credit Union. So we're really excited to have gotten those first donations. We look to get more. Um, and we're really appreciative of them helping us in this.
Thank you. How much was just the afternoon session?
Was it thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five?
Or forty-five hundred, yeah.
Well, that's almost, I don't even want to say. That's almost reasonable, but when I saw that twelve thousand five hundred number, I almost jumped out of my seat and I was thinking, um, I imagine we could, and I'm not taking anything away from that program because from everything I heard, especially from all of you, that it was, it was phenomenal. But with twelve thousand five hundred dollars, I, I have to believe that we could find some experts in the subject of opioids and people have gone through some of the same things possibly, um, college athletes who didn't make the Celtics and who aren't as successful at speaking as him, but could, could get the message across. So, um, I think it would be great if we could have him back again and give the middle schoolers the the same opportunity that the high school students had. But then beyond that, the, um, the twelve thousand five hundred just seemed, seemed outlandish to me. And even if you had him in the afternoon and had someone else come in and follow up on some of their experiences and, and some of the, um, pitfalls and, and some of the things to look out for. I, I've seen, um, different guest speakers and they've been, um, quite phenomenal themselves. So just something to, to think about. I didn't think that we had paid that much before, so when I saw that, I didn't know if it was a misprint or not.
Yeah, maybe some other grant opportunities out there that will also be able to help us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, not only that, I'm sorry. If we were to spend, um, several thousand dollars, we may be in a position where we could have someone come in, um, every trimester. Just, just to sort of deliver that message and, and keep, um, driving it home throughout the school year. And I know, I know it's difficult to staff a program like that, so that, that brings up a whole nother set of challenges, so to, to have that happen. But if it was something we could do during the school day, an hour or two here or there, those are just some of my thoughts. And again, I, I would never try to, um, tell any of you how to do your jobs because I appreciate the way that you do them now. It's just when I saw, again, when I saw that number, it really. Wayne, did you have something?
I was just going to say, hopefully you'll get more donations because it's such a cause that needs to be addressed. And I know you put yourself out there and try and get in donations, but hopefully that will help. You know, because that's what we need. We need the help. We can't do it alone. We need people to help.
Community.
I think our community understands, um, how desperate we are to, to fix this problem. And it's not, it's not just our community, community, but I know our community is very giving and we certainly don't want to see any moral effects of it. Any other comments?
In your opinion, do you feel that our schools are in crisis? Are there a lot of students that are suffering from the opioid, opioid addiction?
I would say that we're not in crisis within our schools, but I think the whole focus of this grant is prevention. So it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
I just was wondering if he came during the day for the lesser charge. Could parents be invited? Would that be allowed?
I think that would be difficult to put everyone on. So I'm sorry, I don't mean to answer.
Through the chair, I think that's really it. It's a space issue, you know, depending on and, and where's, do you want to answer that? I'm sorry. Um, in terms of, you know, the target audience at the middle school, is it going to be a particular grade or all three of the grades? It was very appropriate for the high school, um, students that it may be very appropriate for six, seven and eight. He gears it pretty much to the audience, but in terms of space, I mean, it filled the auditorium really for the high school and that was just for the high school students.
I was just thinking of the gym where they did the graduation that seemed like they could get a lot of people. And I mean, I just know when we used to do the Egypt program for the sixth grade, we used to invite any available parents that had, had the time and wanted to come, to come.
Yeah.
And, you know, and they did. I mean, obviously a lot of parents are working, but they managed to come for a lot of, a lot of it. And if that could be an opportunity, I mean, it'd be one way to get some of the parents to hear it anyhow.
Any further discussion? Well, I thank you for that report, Dr. Lizay, and by no means was I critiquing, um, your initiative to address the opioid crisis. It was just that, that one price tag that got me because I'm certainly on board with everything else. Thank you very much. Okay. Cecilia, would you like to share the business and financial report with us?
Yes, I would. Okay. Um, good evening, everyone. I have provided a copy of a memo I sent to CFO Casanova to close out the fiscal year seventeen for your information. The memo was dated July twelfth. And since that point, we have liquidated forty-five, forty-five percent of the balance of that amount that we carry forward. Um, and we'll be, um, finishing to close that out, um, with backwater shipments that are being received and necessary invoices that we're still waiting on to pay that down. But we will have that closed out very shortly. So that carryover funds for the seventeen year.
Cecilia, I'm just going to interrupt for one second. Thank you for that piece of the report. I'm just going to go back and, um, entertain the motion to accept with gratitude the donations from Senator Moore.
Uh, I'll make the motion to accept with gratitude the donation from Senator Moore and Webster First Credit, Federal Credit Union. Thank you letters will be sent.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that. Hopefully Senator Moore's not watching or anything.
Um, next, also in your packets, I have a copy of, um, several of the amenity bus transfers that were made following our last meeting in June to close out fiscal year seventeen. Um, I provided those for your information so that you'd have those. Any questions? All right. In your packet, you also have a year-to-date budget report for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, reflecting expenses paid to date. And I'd be happy to answer any of those questions with regard to the budget report.
Seeing none?
All right. Okay. With the budget report, I've also put together- All right. Okay. With the budget report, I've also put together a list of necessary transfers for the fiscal year eighteen budget to honor, mostly to honor the staff contract obligations. So I made some adjustments in transfers. Most of the transfers are in the same series. However, there is a group of transfers between series one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, and four thousand that require a vote of your approval. So I'm gonna ask for that.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as requested by the business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And in a previous meeting, you had voted to elect Mrs. Holloway to sign the accounts payable warrants on your behalf. Um, and then we would report back to you on those warrants that were signed by Mrs. Holloway. She's been very gracious. She's come in several times. We've had warrants between the dates of six-twenty and August fifteenth of this fiscal, or of two thousand seventeen, and she's come in and signed for us. So they're all listed there. Um, for your information, I'm also keeping a um backup in my office as well with the signature and with the actual backup of the um documents themselves. So I have that in my office. Okay. And then um I have also a memo that actually, Dr. Brunel had kind of spoken to the memo, but I was looking again to see that um to get your support. It it references the Fed stabilization account, and I know that you've already voted at one point to support that, but I'd like to have your vote of approval to continue with that, that when we go and meet with the town boards and CFO Casanova and town manager, um Julie Jacobson, to continue to um to work on establishing. I think it's so critical that we establish that that stabilization account. Should we have any funds left over at the end of the fiscal year, that we would be, have the opportunity to apply that to that account and help ourselves or in other ways if there was money's available to the town. But I'd ask for a vote of your support again.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to establish a Fed stabilization account for the request of the business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much.
And is that all you have for us?
I believe so, because we've already talked.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report. We now move on to policies.
So the student activities account policy, Mrs. Worsbicky is recommending some changes. They are noted in red. Uh, we have reviewed through these, and I am in agreement with them. Basically that uh we need to provide, will provide notification to classes that they're going to need to by uh April first of the year after graduation to actually uh take their monies out with the option to donate as several have to the helping our own fund. Actually, it's one year from graduation, my apologies.
They need to let the prin- through the chair, they need to let the principal know like by April first that what they wish to do with those funds if they're not going to take them out.
Okay. I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy, policy J J F student activities accounts as amended by the business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
And then I just wanted to update you. Back at the meeting in June, I had brought forward to you a proposed policy regarding CPR and AED training. And since then, we've had two really beneficial meetings, one in July and one in August. And of those, in attendance at those meetings, there is generalized agreement around the belief that this makes sense um to do this and to go forward and and to create a team effort on that. We've not worked out the specifics of it yet. Uh, we do have a quote. I'm actually in communication. Um, Darcy Cook, who is a mom of children in our school district, um has been really positive about this. She actually had been one of the ones initially to bring this idea forward. So she's helped, looking to help us get even some better pricing for this. So it's really a great team effort that's taking place. So at this point, I would suggest that we just leave the um policy as is. I'm not recommending any changes to it, and we're gonna figure out a timeline that makes sense that we can encourage individuals to do this if possible. So we'll keep you apprised. Uh, we have a meeting upcoming on September nineteenth next.
Any comments, questions?
Through the chair, uh, well, if we could structure it, it would have to be sponsored by the actual staff member. Otherwise, I'd offer to do it, but this might be a good candidate for one of the chambers many grants.
Good idea.
Absolutely.
It just has to be attached to a faculty member, so.
Okay. Great idea. Thank you for that. And I have been following um along with the minutes of those meetings, and it seems like you're really making some progress. And I like some of the ideas. And I'm glad that we um just took a small step back and had some um nice discussions. Sorry I haven't made it to any of the meetings, but um it sounds like some good things are happening. And I appreciate everyone who is a part of that committee. Okay. We do need to go into executive session, so I would entertain that motion.
I will make the motion per Master General Watch after thirty, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel and per section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Roll call, I'm sorry, roll call.
We need roll call.
Ms. Sarandon?
Yes. Yes. Oh, Lord. Yes.
Of course, meaning me.
Mrs. Holloway? Yes. Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Scobie?
Yes, it is a vote. Good night, everyone.